Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now call on the role of the members. Councilor Naomi Zabat.
Present.
Councilor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Giovanni Recupro. Absent. Councilor Leo Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilor Calvin Brown.
Yeah.
Councilor Damali Vido.
Present.
Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Councilor Ymir Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Councilor Roya Avellaneda, present. Councilor Ennio Lopez.
Yeah.
Ten. Present. One absent. Next item on the agenda is memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have none there. Next one is the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. If there's anyone here who would like to speak, please rise to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have four minutes.
I have to remove my mask or keep it on.
You can take it off.
All right. So I'm just going to keep this brief. My name is Alex Malacar塞den, 49 Cook Ave, Chelsea, Mass., 02150. I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge the poll workers will be working tomorrow during these turbulent and unprecedented times to safeguard our republic and to ensure that everything runs smoothly. So pretty much to all the poll workers who are working out there across the Commonwealth, the United States and the city, thank you for everything you're going to do tomorrow. That's all.
Anyone else? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. Now we're going on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? Councilor Lopez asked that we accept and file the communication, I'm sorry, the minutes of the last meeting under suspension. We have a communication from the city manager in regards to the PACE program. Dear councilors, I am writing with a request that the city council approve a local option that will allow for certain property owners to take advantage of the new financing option approved by the state legislature to encourage energy improvements. The financing, known as property assessed clean energy, or PACE, is being administered by the mass development. PACE financing works as follows. An owner of the property wishing to take advantage of the program for energy improvements finds a financing source, a bank or other investor, and then works with mass development and the Department of Energy Resources to evaluate the proposal. The energy cost savings generated by the investment must exceed the cost of the energy improvements. Once that is established, the project can proceed. The money is loaned to the project owner, but payback is not in a standard form. Instead, the municipality levies on the property a PACE betterment assessment, which is included on the local municipal tax bill. Once the city collects the money on the tax bill, it forwards the money to mass development, which in turn makes arrangement to pay the financing source. The benefit to the owner in this type of situation is that this kind of loan is typically easier to secure because there is a reduced risk of non-payment. In addition, in the future sale of the property, the loan does not become due. Instead, the remaining PACE assessment runs with the property itself and transfers to the new owner. The program does not have any significant downside to the municipality. Any payment by the owner of the tax bill is applied to the PACE betterment assessment only after all taxes and interest owed to the city are fully satisfied. Further, the city's municipal lien is senior to any PACE lien, and the city remains in first position on any foreclosure. The one potential impact on the city is some additional administrative work in the financing departments because the PACE betterments have to be separately accounted for and forwarded to mass development on a regular basis. But the benefits to the city, encouraging investment in energy-efficient upgrades to existing properties, outweigh this minor administrative inconvenience. At least 29 communities in the Commonwealth have already adopted this program. In order to allow owners to take advantage of PACE financing on a building within Chelsea, the city council must vote to opt into the program. A draft order is attached for your convenience. If this program is of interest to the city council, I can arrange for a representative of mass development to attend a virtual subcommittee meeting to discuss the program in detail and answer any questions. I've attached a recent PowerPoint presentation on the program for mass development for informational purposes. What is the wish of the city council?
Accept and follow communication. There'll be something coming up under new business.
Councilor Vido asked that it be accepted under suspension. Next item on the agenda is a communication received from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino, in regards to the status of major public infrastructure projects. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to your October 19, 2020, city council letter requesting a status of the major public infrastructure projects in the city. Attached, you will find a spreadsheet prepared by Public Works Commissioner Fidel Maltese and Housing and Community Development Director Alex Train, identifying all major infrastructure projects in the city with start dates and projected end dates and a status on each. I hope this is helpful. What is wish of the council? Councilor Rodriguez? Seeing none.
Mr. President, can I just say something very briefly?
Councilor Vido, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like, for the city manager, I wonder if there's a way of making that digital so that it can continuously be updated and we always have access to it as opposed to needing to go to the city manager to get a paper form of any pending projects that are happening? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a communication from the city manager in regards to a grant from Center Life, I'm sorry, for Center for Tech and Civic Life. Dear councilors, recently, City Clerk Jeanette Citron White was awarded a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, CTCL, for the purpose of covering some of the additional costs of running an election during this COVID era, including additional costs for protective equipment, additional cleaning, and temporary employees. The total amount of the grant is $27,112. A copy of the award letter is attached. In accordance to Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Subchapter 53A, I am requesting that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant of $27,112 from CTCL. A copy of the required order is attached. What is the... Council Robinson asked that to be adopted and accepted under suspension, seeing none, no objection. The next item on the agenda is the communication from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to appointment to the cultural council. Dear councilors pursuant to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the appointment to the cultural council Ms. Alyssa Erickson, 325 Commandant's Way, Apartment 232, Chelsea, for a full three-year term. Mrs. Erickson's resume is attached. What is wish of the council?
Move to a second reading.
Councilor Vido and Robinson asked that this move to a second reading. Next communication from the city manager is in regards to amendments to storm water ordinance. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the city council consider some amendments to our existing ordinance on storm water management. The City of Chelsea discharges stormwater person to a five-year permit issued jointly by the U.S. EPA and Mass. DEP. This permit is known as the Municipal Separate System Storm Water Permit, MS4. The newest MS4 became effective on July 1, 2018, and requires municipalities to meet certain storm water control measures and to update the ordinance no later than July 1, 2021. The city's current storm water management requirements are set forth in Section 30, Article 5, Division 2, Sections 30-218-30-225 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts. In order to make the requirements of that section comply with new demands of the MS4 permit, a few changes are required. Those changes are set forth in the new attached draft ordinance. To ensure compliance with the new MS4 permit, I respectfully ask that the city council approve these changes to the storm water management ordinance. Representatives from the DBW's new Water and Sewer Department will be made available to answer any questions on these changes at a subcommittee meeting if desired. What is wish of the council?
Accept and follow communication. There'll be something coming up under new business.
Councilor Vido asked that it be accepted under suspension, seeing no objection. The next item on the agenda is a communication received from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino, in regards to fiscal year tax rates. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the city council schedule a meeting of the subcommittee on conference on Monday, November 16, 2020, or a more convenient date soon thereafter for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2021 tax rates. Similar to past years, my goal at that meeting is to provide a PowerPoint presentation and then answer questions about the FY '21 valuations and the tax rate. I also ask that the city council schedule a public hearing with the Board of Assessors on Monday, November 30 for the purpose of voting on the minimum residential tax factor and setting the tax rates for 2021. What is wish of the council? Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted under suspension.
Can we send it to a subcommittee on conference as well?
The request is a, it's a request for a meeting, so we don't need to have that sent to a subconference, but it's under the request.
Okay.
Communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to request for a dumpster at city yard. I am writing in response to request that the city install a dumpster at the city yard to allow residents to dispose of trash prohibited from our regular trash collections. Although I'm always inclined to assist residents, this proposal is problematic. The City of Chelsea is fairly liberal in what it allows in the solid waste stream, including bulky waste items and minor constructed debris that most communities prohibit. A flyer on our solid waste rules is attached for your review. I fear that in addition to this weekly trash option, we allow residents to dump at the city yard the few materials we do prohibit. We will be inundated with hard-to-dispose of materials, including large-scale construction demolition materials. If the city's current rules regarding solid waste disposal are of a particular interest to the city council, I suggest we have a subcommittee meeting to discuss. This may be an opportune time for such a meeting because our current solid waste disposal contract expires at the end of this fiscal year. We should be on the same page as to what items we require the new trash vendor to include in collection before we start seeking competitive bids. Obviously, the more liberal our trash rules are, the pricier the bids. What is the wish of the council? Councilor Brown asked that we accept and file the communication under suspension.
I'm sorry, I thought it was his motion, so I haven't...
Are you asking for a subcommittee on trash?
I would like to send this to a meeting for subcommittee.
Can you see, bring the mic up so that everyone can hear you. Bring the mic to you.
I'd like to adopt this and to bring it under the subcommittee so we can discuss this matter. We'll set a date to be with the subcommittee in conference.
We'll do that. Next item on the agenda is a communication from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino, in regards to amendments on marijuana establishments. Dear councilors, in the follow-up to our discussion at last week's subcommittee meeting, I am submitting for your consideration several proposed changes to the rules governing the retail marijuana industry. The proposed changes basically accomplishes two goals. First, they expand into the retail business district the opportunity to open a retail marijuana establishment. Given the limited real estate opportunities that exist in the industrial shopping center and highway business districts where this use is currently allowed, providing opportunity in this retail district may reduce some barriers to entry. Second, the new proposed rules provide legal authorization for operation of entities solely in the business of transporting marijuana, including for home deliveries. Because there does not yet seem to be any consensus on changing the number of marijuana retail establishments allowed in the city, I have left out any change to our current ordinance which restricts the number to four, the minimum allowed by law. However, changing that ceiling or eliminating ceiling entirely requires a simple amendment to or elimination of current ordinance Section 14459. Such action requires neither a supermajority nor a public hearing. It can be accomplished by a simple majority vote at any future city council meeting. I respectfully ask the city council refer the proposed zoning changes to the planning board for recommendation and then schedule a public hearing. As for the one non-zoning change, Amendment 5, that merely requires a city council vote. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication and send it on to the planning board.
There, accept and file on the communication, there'll be something new coming up and new business. Communication received from Planning Director Alex Train in regards to small business loan program. That's the communications petitions to the council. Dear councilors, in writing with an update on COVID-19 Small Business Economic Recovery Program on 9/25, we closed the application period for this program. In total, once duplicates were removed, we ended the application phase with 137 applications. Our review progress is summarized below. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. I'm available via email or cell at your convenience. Restaurants, we finished our review in scoring of all the restaurant applications, 29 in total, depicted in the attached presentation. All but two restaurants requested the maximum amount of funding, $20,000. If we award the maximum amount requested, we can serve approximately 20 restaurants. Our recommendation is to make smaller awards that can aid all 29 that applied. Today, we're performing our final evaluation to ensure the applicants are in good standing with the city and state. The number of applicants served may change based on this final review. General small businesses. The remaining 108 applications originated from general small businesses, a mix of retailers, personal care providers, i.e. salons, light industry, i.e. equipment sales, distribution and produce, and contractors, home improvement, house painting. We'll have the scoring completed by the end of today. Subsequently, we'll conduct a review to ensure the highest ranking applicants are in good standing prior to announcing awards. General information. Total number of applications, 137. Total breakdown between the two groups, 29 restaurants, 108 general small businesses. Number of applications rejected, none so far, but this may change as we conduct the good standing and the barment review. Number of applications reviewed to date, the scoring of all applications will be completed by the end of 10/27. We do expect that will take us about a week to finish reviewing good standing and barment. Expected completion date, I think this is 11, well, 1/30/21. Expected date for notification, acceptance, denial, now through 11/6. Expected data funds to businesses, we're targeting 11/23/20 for the release of the first tranche of funds. Releases will continue thereafter as small businesses sign and return W9s and loan agreements. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Moving on to second readings. We have a order that, by Councilor Avellaneda, ordered that pursuant to MGL 44A, that the city council approves the City of Chelsea entering into an agreement for the North Suffolk Resiliency Substability Office with municipalities of Revere and Winthrop. Is there a motion on the floor?
Ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Council Robinson asked that there be a roll call. Council, Council Brown, you have the floor.
I apologize, I was out for a meeting last week. Is it any chance, given the update on this meeting that took place in the subcommittee last week?
The meeting that was held subconference on the navigators was not relative to disorder. It was a completely separate, the update was the navigators, was simply that. An update on the work of the navigators. It did not have anything relative to disorder itself. But if you'd like, I will allow the city manager to give us a brief summary of the order. There wasn't accompanied communication at the last meeting.
Yes.
But I'll let him do a Crip sheet if you'd like.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. President. So, this, this is a regional offer that the cities of Chelsea, Revere, and Winthrop are seeking to launch. It's basically a climate resiliency office that will focus on energy and climate resiliency. It's being funded by the BAHA Foundation for three years. There'll be no contribution by any of the cities in fiscal year '21. There'll be an insignificant contribution in FY '22. I gave you the breakdown last week, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the city's contribution in FY '22 will be about $8,000. That grows in FY '23 a little bit. FY '24, two years from now, is really the first year where the city has to put any significant money into this. And then FY '25, the BAHA Foundation contribution ends, and the cities will have to, all three cities will have to pick up the tab for this office. But the three cities have been working on this office for quite some time with the hope that we could launch it. It's been delayed for financial reasons, but BAHA Foundation has committed to support this office for three full calendar years, and the cities are proposing to move forward. To do that does require this intermunicipal agreement, and it requires a vote of all three of the legislative bodies in each city and town. The BAHA Foundation Board is going to vote on this proposal, this three-year commitment, to I think about $600,000 at their December board meeting. So the cities and towns are trying to show that they're on board by passing these votes in advance of that board meeting. If the council approves this, and assuming the BAHA Foundation commits to the funding, we will move forward in calendar year 2021 to start the office. It will be housed here in Chelsea City Hall, and it will start with two employees. And we will, the commitment we've made to the BAHA Foundation is that we will have these two employees hired by the end of April of 2021.
Through the chair.
So, isn't it that if we commit to this, the BAHA Foundation is already saying, all right? Because I thought you said if we commit to this, this just shows a good, a good relationship that the three communities want to come together, but is the BAHA Foundation 100% supportive if we all commit?
Well, there is a required vote of the BAHA Foundation Board, but we have been led to believe that that is virtually a formality and that we have been given, that we're going to get the green light. But it does require an official vote of the BAHA Foundation Board to release the funds, and that vote doesn't take place until sometime in December.
And the last part of it was, so Chelsea would be the place to house the office space for the employees out of the three communities?
Correct. And they will be employees of the, they will be employees of the City of Chelsea. We will be getting some administrative costs for doing that.
From the other communities?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Through the chair, Councilor Cupro.
Same project that's been going on for the last four years, right? Three years?
So, no.
Isn't it the same one?
We have...
With the three cities combined? Are they going to split times? The last time, from what I remember, said it was going to be, the office was going to be here in Chelsea, but it also was going to be somewhere else like Winthrop or Revere? They were going to split time between them? This must be the same project, right?
So, this is slightly different. A few years ago, we shared an energy manager with this town of Winthrop, and that's exactly how it worked, a person split time between the two communities. That project lasted about three years, we got some grant funding for that, but it concluded when the employee got a different job, and then the two cities decided that rather than do that, let's go in a more broader direction of a climate resiliency office, and we've been working on this for about the last year and a half, two years since that employee left. So, it's similar to that, the three, in that case, it was only two communities. That was only Chelsea and Winthrop.
Now you got Revere.
This time, we're using three communities and joining in this municipal agreement.
So, does our portion of the money increase or decrease because we have another city now?
There, our portion of the money will be split proportionally based on population size. So, we will pay more than Winthrop but less than Revere.
So, okay, I understand, thank you.
Councilor Taylor.
So, when we need to start chipping in money, when we need to start chipping in money for this in a substantial way after year three, what, what kind of money are we talking about exactly? Before I agree to anything, I need to know exactly what we're, what we're talking about. And, and in addition, what, what exactly is this office going to do? And not, not such in general terms, but in, I mean, in reality?
So, they'll be looking at, you know, they'll be focusing on energy efficiencies within the cities and towns. So, things like, you know, the sort of stuff that we've spent, we've already spent some time on, municipal aggregation, microgrids, energy-efficient buildings. But they'll also be looking at climate resiliency efforts. So, they'll be spending time on the Island River Climate Resiliency Project. They'll be... They'll be spending times on a Mill Creek Climate Resiliency Project, things that we're projects that we're proposing to do on these rivers to protect the city from rising floodwaters. And so, that will be the focus of their attention in the City of Chelsea. They'll be doing other specific tasks in the other cities, but in the short term, those are probably the most specific projects that they'll be working on. In terms of the amount, so the Bar Foundation is funding this in calendar year, so they're funding it for three calendar years at at descending amount, so the first calendar year, twenty-twenty-one, they're, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, you had it last week, and you'll have it in your package, but the first calendar year, it's a hundred percent, so we don't owe any money for calendar year twenty-one, which means that in fiscal year twenty-two, we have to pick up a piece, a small piece of the cost for that second half of the fiscal year, it's about eight thousand dollars. We'll have to pick up a piece of the cost for the beginning of twenty-three and the second half of twenty-three. The Bar Foundation funding will fully end at the end of calendar year twenty-four, so it will be fiscal year twenty-five before the city has to make any significant contribution. At this point, it would probably be, I'm I'm going from memory, about seventy-five thousand dollars would be our contribution in fiscal year twenty-five. So, that's three fiscal years away.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll now call the roll. A yes vote will adopt the order. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anio Lopez.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none against, and that one passes. Moving on to the next second reading, order introduced by Counsel Robinson regards to the school department revised budget of one hundred thousand dollars, sorry, one hundred million dollars, three hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. What is the wish of the counselor?
Counsel.
Counsel Robinson has the floor.
That's the school, on the school committee budget?
Yes.
Okay, actually, the school committee was made whole, that's why the amount of money went to a hundred million, and asked for a roll call vote on the adoption as the state came up with another three million and change to bring it, bring it up to level funding which they received last year.
Are you asking for a motion?
Yeah, ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Counsel Recupro, please speak into the mic.
Okay.
So, we can hear you.
I don't understand why we increase in this. Instead of decreasing, we go up. The schools are not open. Most of the, they don't pay for school lunches, the schools are being closed, so if something is closed, it should decrease, not increase. The teachers, the kids are not going to school. It's not that you wanna, the money, don't give it to them, give it the money, but if something is not there, let's like me, if I go to work and I turn around and don't work all the time, and they say to me, well, stay home, now, you don't pay for school lunches, you don't pay for this, you don't pay for that, we should see a decrease, not an increase. Why are we seeing an increase when the schools ain't even open? That's what I can't understand. Why do we have, I can see here that it say the city, the state shoffled them and didn't give them all the money, they were the poster, but if something is closed, it doesn't use the expenditure that it needs, all the money, so if it's closed, it should decrease. Why is it increasing? That's my question. Why is it increasing when it should be decreasing? That's not about giving them the money, that's fine, I just would like to have an answer. Why are we increasing when the schools are closed?
Counsel Recupro, the clarification by Counsel Robinson was that the state provided an increase in funding, it's not the city. So, to reflect that aid, increase in state aid, the budget has to be amended.
I understand that, the state gives them and then it says, well, but here says, chapter seventy money, that's where the money comes from the school, right?
Correct.
We give them, then we supposed to fund them to what they, but I don't, why is their budget increased? That's what I don't understand. How can you increase when the school is closed?
To reflect.
It's got nothing to do with funding them, why did they increase it?
To reflect the amount increased by the state. If you have an issue with the increased budget or money that was sent to us by the state, then you can gladly talk to our state delegation and ask the Department of, State Department of Education why they gave us more money. I'm sure our superintendent will tell you that that's not a problem for her. Counsel Robinson.
The the increase in money, what was the same amount of money in which they received last year? There are teachers who are teaching our kids in school virtual, and also, they've been providing breakfast and lunch.
Are they doing that now?
The kids in our community, yes, they're doing that now.
So, even though the children don't go to school, they still provide it for them?
Yes.
That's why this is the, that's what I was asking, I couldn't understand why we would increase. So, in other words, nothing decreased, we're still doing the same thing, but in a small, without the kids being there, they can still go there and get lunches and everything, right?
Yep, every day.
Okay. That's a explanation why, that's clear enough.
Now that Counsel Recupro has been given an explanation, we'll now call the roll. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda, yes. Counsel Anio Lopez.
Yes.
The measure passes eleven zero. Moving on to the next second reading, we have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson regards to the appropriation of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents for water improvements to fiscal year twenty-nineteen Essex Street Project. Counsel Robinson, what is the wish?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. There are no objections.
I'm gonna ask for a slight, a small recess. My blue sheets for tally are all blank, I need to have some tally sheets by your assistant, so sit back, we'll be back in five minutes, folks. We now have an order for transferring proceeds of borrowing that are no longer needed to complete the project for which they were originally borrowed, to pay costs for an alternative capital project as authorized by chapter forty-four of section twenty. The amount was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Counsel Robinson has asked for a roll call vote, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll now call the roll. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda, yes. Counsel Anio Lopez, yes. Eleven in favor, zero against, none absent. Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, second reading, is regards to appropriation of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents for the sewer improvements for fiscal year twenty-nineteen Essex Street Project. Counsel Robinson.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson is asking for a roll call on the adoption of the reappropriation of the funds, is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Can you repeat the number again, the appropriation amount?
The first order, the previous order was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. This one is for one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. And that's, I'm sorry, there's a, it looks like there's an error on the text on the communication. This is for Webster Ave.
Okay.
So, the the second reading is, the one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars is an uninspected portion of the two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars borrowed under the twenty-seventeen budget that was made for Webster Avenue Utility Project Sewer Bond. That is now going to the, to help pay for the twenty, the twenty-nineteen Essex.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The yes vote is a is an approval, and no is against transfer of the funds. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anio Lopez, yes. Eleven in favor, zero against, none absent, motion carries. Next order is an order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to the appropriations of two hun, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents from the General Stabilization Account Fund to the Essex Street Project. The order reads, order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of set amounts from General Stabilization Account seventy-twenty to fiscal year twenty-nineteen Essex Street Project. A yes vote is in favor. Counsel Robinson moved that this be adopted on the roll call vote.
On the roll call vote, there are no objections.
Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anio Lopez, yes. Eleven in favor, zero against, none absent, and motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business. Order introduced by Counsel Recupro requesting that the city manager to instruct the department heads to have graphs and math to be legible size. Chair recognizes Counsel Recupro.
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
I don't know if this is strategically done by the department heads, that every time they send us these statistics, and they're so small, we can't even read them with glasses. You need a big, a big, big pair of glasses to look at them. So, we spend money all the time on these machines. We write these machines that's supposed to give us graphics and bigger, so I would like at least for them to give us bigger size, so we, the council, can see more or less what they are, because they're so small, you can't even understand them. This is the whole, if you're gonna give me something that I'm gonna read and understand, at least I should be able to read it even with glasses. Thank you.
Under suspension, Counsel Recupro.
Huh?
Under suspension? You wanted this to be passed under suspension?
Yes, I said adopt under suspension if there's no objection.
Can you please sign that? Next order on the on the new business, order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to city manager to have the assistant DBW Director Lou Mallet give the city council an update on the city will reach the goal of savings, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars by creating the Water Sewer Department. Counsel Robinson.
Yeah, I'd ask for a roll call vote on this. I know we were promised when we had the conference and establishing the Water Department that in the first year, we'd have a savings of three hundred and fifty thousand. Just kinda looking to see where we are, if we are gonna meet that goal or we're not gonna reach it. So, I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Conference DBW update. The council has asked for a rolled, a roll call on a conference with DBW on an update of the having the Water and Sewer Department taken over by the city DBW. A yes vote would adopt this and move this to conference. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Excuse me. We can just get a communication back, we don't really need to have a conference, but if the communication comes back and we need a conference, we can have a conference.
I'm sorry, I can't.
I said if, we can just get a communication back. If communication comes back and we feel we need to have a conference, at that time, we could have a conference.
So, you want a, not a conference, a communication.
Communication.
I apologize. This is a communication request, an update from DBW, not a conference request. Apologize for the confusion. So, a vote in favor of this was to be requesting a update from Lou, the Director of Water and Sewer, to provide the city council an update on the finances of, in taking over the DB, the Water and Sewer Department by DBW. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown. Absent. Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anio Lopez, yes. Eleven in favor, Counsel Brown being recognized as voting in favor, eleven in favor, zero, none against, and zero absent, motion carries. Next order introduced by Counsel Recupro in regards to city manager provide information on all take-home vehicles and who are assigned those vehicles to include amount of gas and maintenance records for each vehicle.
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Counsel Recupro, you have the floor.
I put in for this a couple of years ago, and I was really never satisfied with the, all the things I got. I really don't know, how many cars does this city actually have? What is the total cost of these cars to the city? And what are these cars supposed to do? Are these cars, from what I understand from the time before, these cars are called portal cars. The whole purpose of this car is to take you from your city to your home, they're not supposed to be your own personal car. That's my, unless they changed, they were, now they become their own personal car. So, I would like to know, these cars, when they're used, and if any of them increased, what is the total amount? Because from before, I asked, one person, I'm not saying what it was, but one person had two cars, then I asked them again, and now it has three cars. So, a car increased. So, I would like to know where these cars are, how much does it cost? I know that the city picks up the insurance, because the city ensures itself, but I mean, we maintain them, we pay for the gas, so if these are called portal cars, that they're only supposed to be used from your job to your house, I'd like to know, what is the average there? What does it cost the city, the average, to to run that? And if it's above what the city estimates it costs, then that means that these cars are being used for other purposes. And that's my, I want to understand. Couple of years ago, I didn't understand what they were saying. Now, I would like to really understand, who has these cars, how much does it cost the city, how much gas does it have, and what is actually the purpose of these cars? Is it just like they say, as a portal car? Is it just like they say, as a portal car? It goes from home to here? Or these cars being used all the time, and we're picking up the tab? That's, I'd like to have a car too for myself, where I don't pay insurance, I don't pay gas, and I don't pay anything. Why not? You know? If that, that's the question I asked. I asked two years ago, and I never got a good answer. I'm asking the same question again, and I would like to get an answer this time. What are the purpose of these cars? Explain to the residents of Chelsea, what is a portal car? And what is a car that you take home and you use all the time? So this is the difference I want to know. And I would like at least the city to explain to the people what these are, and what is the cost? And how many do we totally have? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Recupro. Any objection is being passed under suspension. Seeing none. Council Recupro, can you please sign the order? Next order on the agenda. Order introduced by Council Vergeneda in regards to Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE. Order authorizing the city of Chelsea to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE. Whereas pursuant to MGL 23M, as amended the PACE Act, the Commonwealth has established a commercial sustainability energy program known as Massachusetts Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts, to provide a funding mechanism, PACE financing, to private owners of commercial and industrial properties to certain qualifying commercial energy improvements. Whereas pursuant to the PACE Act, PACE Massachusetts is administered by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, Mass Development, in consultation with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Whereas under PACE Massachusetts, the owner of the commercial or industrial property benefiting from the improvements of the, is required to repay the PACE financing through payment of betterment assessment, a PACE betterment assessment placed on such benefited property by the municipality in which the benefited property is located. And whereas, in order to attain the owner of the commercial or industrial property to participate in PACE Massachusetts, Section 2 of the PACE Act requires that the municipality in which such property is located must elect to participate in PACE Massachusetts. And whereas, the city of Chelsea, the municipality, has determined that it is in the best interest of the municipality to participate in PACE Massachusetts as a participating municipality, as providing in the PACE Act, and to permit the owners of commercial and industrial properties located in the municipality to access PACE financing for qualifying commercial energy improvements through PACE Massachusetts. Whereas therefore, it may be resolved as follows. The city council of the city of Chelsea hereby approves municipality participating in PACE Massachusetts pursuant to PACE Act, so many Ps in a row, wow, and authorize the city manager to enter into a PACE Massachusetts municipal assessment and assignment agreement, the agreement with Mass Development, pursuant to which the municipality will agree to levy PACE betterment assessments and impose PACE betterment assessment liens on benefited properties located in the municipality, and the amounts determined by Mass Development to be sufficient to repay the PACE financing. Assigned a PACE betterment assessment lien to Mass Development, which Mass Development may in turn assign to providers of the PACE financing, i.e. each capital provider, as collateral for such PACE financing, including the property bills for the benefited properties and the installment payments necessary to pay the PACE betterment assessments, in the amounts and at the times as determined by Mass Development. Section 4, collect and pay over to Mass Development or designate the PACE betterment assessment installment payments as when collected. And 5, enforce to the extent required by the agreement, the PACE betterment assessments and liens and agreements to substantial, substantiality in the form presented in this meeting. To such changes, modifications, and insertions, as the city manager may approve as being in the best interest of the municipality. The collective treasurer of the city may be designated in the agreement, is authorized to levy such PACE betterment assessments and impose the betterment assessment liens on behalf of the city without further authorization of this legislative body. Notwithstanding any other provision of the law, to the contrary, officers and officials of the municipality, including without limitation, municipal tax assessors and tax collectors are not personally liable to Mass Development or to any other persons for claims of whatever kind of nature, under or related to PACE Massachusetts, including without limitation claims for and related to uncollected PACE betterment assessments. Other than fulfillment of the obligations specified in the agreement, the municipality has no liability to the owner of the benefited property and to the capital providers relating to the municipality's participation in PACE Massachusetts. What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt by roll call vote, Mr. President.
Ms., Councilor Damali asked that we approve it on a roll call vote. Is anyone who wants to speak on this? Council Brown.
First, I want to thank the city manager for even considering this for us here. I know it's an interesting project that has funding that may go forward for the owners. But I believe it helps the residents or the owners who want to participate in these programs. It gives them, as it states, a better chance to get in a loan that not only they can afford, but at a smaller risk. It also gives them an opportunity to deal with some of the things that can really help enhance their property. It doesn't put the city in a big bind by offering this program. We don't really have any liability over it if it goes wrong. It's the agreement between the two entities here, homeowner and the PACE. So I just think another opportunity for the residents, despite this COVID-19 era, to get an opportunity to try to fix their properties or try to enhance their property at a low, very low loan opportunity. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
Any other speakers? Seeing none. Council Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Council Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Councilor Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Council Giovanni Recupro. Council Leo Robinson. Council Calvin Brown.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Damali Vido.
Yes.
Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Roya Vergeneda votes yes. Council Ymir, I'm sorry, Council Ennio Lopez.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero against, non-absent, motion carries. Next order on the agenda is the order introduced by Council Roya Vergeneda in regards to amendments to storm water ordinance. Whereas it express purpose of municipal zoning to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea. And whereas the Commonwealth and federal government have revised the standards for storm water maintenance and discharge.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Vido.
Is there a way that we could waive the reading and maybe you just read the amendments to what's relevant to the orders, so that you don't have to read all of those pages?
Thank you. I will try to do a quick summary of all of these. So we have several amendments. Amendment 1, we have a revision of the storm drains in regards to building storm drains and connections. Amendment 2 will be an amendment to the use of public drains. Amendment 3 will be the pollution prevention in the storm water collection system. Amendment 4 be discharges exceeding standards. Amendment 4 be for permits of NPDES. Amendment 4 is the maintenance, cleaning, and inspection of systems to manage storm water. And that is all. Are there any, is there a motion on the floor?
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Council Vido asked that we move this order to adoption on a roll call vote. Okay, Council Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Council Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Council Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Council Giovanni Recupro. Council Leo Robinson. Council Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Council Damali Vido.
Yes.
Council Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Roya Vergeneda, yes. Council Ennio Lopez.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero against, zero absent. Next order is an order introduced by Council Vergeneda in regards to marijuana establishments.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Trying to save you some of your oxygen as well, I was wondering if maybe you can just go over for the marijuana ordinance, the amendments? Because this matter still has to go through a public hearing, planning boards, it doesn't make sense to waste all of your oxygen reading it today.
Well, the, I think the, the order itself is short enough that I can read it fast, so I'll just read the order and then ask if there's a motion on the floor.
Perfect.
I'll skip the prelude. There is amendments in regards to the marijuana retail and marijuana ordinances in the city of Chelsea. The first amendment is the delivery, the delivery-only establishment, that we would be adding it to that section in regards to marijuana. And it would be delivery-only marijuana establishment may be conducted as an accessory use in any residential district, provided that no marijuana products are stored at the locus, and the requirements of Section 3450 and 3 are met. And the hours of the operation of the marijuana product delivery shall be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Amendment 2 is that the code of ordinance in regards to, excuse me, the principal uses, the table of principal uses for marijuana retail are amended in the retail business and retail business too from a no N or to an SP, which means by special permit. The amendment, third amendment, is the code of ordinance for the city of Chelsea hereby amending the following after existing for line for marijuana retailer, so that again, that establishment is allowed in those areas. Delivery-only marijuana establishment will be added, and it will be a no in residential 1, a no in residential 2, a no in residential 3, a no, a yes in business district 1, business district 3, the highway zone, a no in the shopping center, a no in the waterfront, a yes in the industry industrial zone, a no in the light industrial zone, a yes in the light industrial zone 2, a no in the navy yacht residential, and a yes in the navy yacht commercial. Marijuana transporter would be allowed solely by special permit in the business district by special permit in BH, and also in the shopping center and industrial zone. The fourth amendment is the requirement in the use of the tables of off-street parking spaces required. In the delivery-only marijuana establishment, one space is required for each delivery vehicle registered in the city of Chelsea. Furthermore, there's an amendment to Section 5 that all vehicles used in the delivery of transport for marijuana products by marijuana establishments licensed by the city licensing commission must be registered in the city of Chelsea. What is the wish of the council? Is there a motion? I'd first like to have a motion on the floor on this order.
Move to a second reading pending a public hearing and a planning board recommendation?
The motion on the floor is that we move this to a second reading, and it'll also be sent to the planning board for review and a public hearing scheduled once that recommendation is sent to us.
Yes, sir.
That's on the floor. Would you like to speak on this, Council Vido?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I will. Briefly, I just want to say that we had a very robust conversation last week during the subcommittee where we talked about the new zoning proposals by the city. I thought it was really good. We had residents come in, and we had a very nice conversation. I think that it is time that we move forward. We moved in baby steps when this was first passed, because we weren't sure how the community would respond to it. But seeing where we are and how well it's doing in other cities, it doesn't make sense that Chelsea, having been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs in the past, doesn't at least try to create a situation where people can actually get into a really lucrative business. So I will be supporting this, but we're not voting on it, so that's irrelevant. And I'm looking forward to going to the planning board to advocate for these zoning requirements by the administration. Thank you.
Council Brown.
Amendment 1, we had here the hours of operations, which will be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. But we didn't have the daily weekdays. Is it seven days a week? Is it five days a week? Is that important for us to have here?
Without it being mentioned, then it would be probably from 9:00 to 9:00 Monday, I mean, all seven days of the week. If there's a concern, I would suggest that maybe you bring that up during the public speaking portion of the planning board, and/or you can always make an amendment, a proposed amendment, when we come back and vote on this. But as it stands, this is 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., all seven days of the week.
They should say that then. It should, it should actually read seven days a week, and then if we have questions or concerns, we can reduce those days to five days or four days or hour separation. Here it just states the hours of operation, not the time throughout the weeks. But that's only.
Again, I suggest that the councilor, if he has any concerns about the certain days and the hours, that he makes them known to the planning board, and of course, you can always make an amendment when this comes back upon recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
No, the time, the operation, hours of operation. Any other speakers? Right, I mean, the days of operation, right. Any other speakers? Seeing none, this is moving to a second reading and will be sent to the planning board for recommendation and review, and will schedule a public hearing once they send back the recommendation. Next order is an order introduced by Council Robinson in regards to appropriation of $27,000 for the purpose of, public purpose of planning and operating a safe and secure elections in 2020. Council Robinson.
Being that this was a grant to the clerk, I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. Normally, we usually send things to a second reading, but there was really no reason for this to go to a second reading, unless somebody on the council would like to move it to a second reading.
Moving to a second reading?
I would actually like to vote on it, so we can be done with it.
The councilor states that he's like asking for a roll call vote on this matter, because if it was a grant, that no second, no second reading is required. Is there any objection to having a roll call?
I second the roll call vote.
So we have a roll call on the expenditure of, accepting, rather, the grant money of $27,112 for the purpose of planning and operating safe and secure elections in 2020. A yes vote is the adoption, a no vote against. Council Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Council Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Council Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Council Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Council Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Council Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Council Damali Vido.
Yes.
Council Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Roya Vergeneda votes yes. Council Ennio Lopez, yes. Eleven in favor, zero against, zero absent, and that motion carries. Now moving on to public announcements, councils, are there anybody who has a public announcements? Councilor Calvin Brown.
Just a, just a reminder for the folks up on the hill, I got a phone call this yesterday morning, early yesterday morning regarding a resident was concerning about dogs being running around the O'Malley's Park, huge dogs, big dogs. So I'm just asking the residents up there that's walking your dogs, if you're listening tonight, if you could just be mindful that there's other folks up in the park, there's folks that may be scared of big dogs. Obviously, if there's big dogs up in the park, you should call the police if they're running around by themselves and there's no owner or no person watching them. But, you know, there are folks out there that are calling and saying that they're afraid of dogs, and, you know, just want you to be mindful that. And you know, just want you to be mindful that, you know, dogs are sometime ferocious and sometime they can just snap at any given moment. But please try to be mindful, there's other folks in the park, even that time of morning. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez?
I just want to remind people that tomorrow's election day, so please go out and vote. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Anyone else? Counselor Robinson?
Veterans Day is on November 11th, and Francisco will be doing a, I believe, a Zoom meeting. And he will be sending out information to the councilors and people in the community if they want to follow along on Veterans Day.
Council Vido?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let everyone know that we're seeing an uptick on COVID globally, but also here locally in Chelsea. The governor has issued some new recommendations for us in terms of mandating masks and other things that we can do to make sure that we're staying safe as we brace ourselves for the second wave. We know that how hard we were hit. The good thing about Chelsea is that we have grit, we work together. No matter what happens, we're going to get out of it, okay? But we just have to make sure that we're being mindful and doing everything in our power to protect ourselves, protect our vulnerable communities, so that we can try to get a hold of it and not see what we saw a few months ago. So just want to remind everyone, we are still very much in a pandemic. And as the winter comes and flu season comes, it's only going to get harder. So please, 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 take care of yourself, check in on your neighbors, let's take care of each other and ourselves. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up to what Council Vido has mentioned about the governor's new guidelines, that also includes that starting Friday, there will be a 10:00 p.m. curfew. From 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., there will be a curfew that will be existing for businesses and all like. It is important to know that the tracing of what they're saying is because there's a lot of congregation between friends and family. This is not something that is going on, and they're not tracking out in the business districts or out in public. But this is more people letting their guards down within close confines of their homes. So it should be very important that even though you think you're home and you're safe, you should take extra precautions while at home, washing hands, wearing a mask when you can. You know, take the Lysol spray, spray yourself down when you come home, shoes off, all of that to make sure that you're not doing, you know, sprayed it. And this is part of the increase. And of course, many of the cases, primarily many of the cases are asymptotic. So many of the people who have it do not even show that they have it. It's important that we all take, we have lots of testing available here in the city in front of City Hall and in Chelsea Square. I'm happy to say that I see, you know, lines there, so I know people are making use of it. But interestingly enough, if you take a conversation with any of them, they realize that they're actually coming from other places too. So because Chelsea is one of the few places that has these sort of resources. And this is in addition to what also Beth Israel is doing too. So there's three sites that I know of that you can do it. So I, I welcome anyone who hasn't had it already to please make sure you do your regular testing. And then of course, hope everyone as well. Anyone else? Any moments of silence? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.